Tato. Welcome to the People's Republic of Christchurch Tuesday Club on Wednesday if that doesn't make enough sense to you well. You shouldn't be here. I'd like to greet my old mate Dave Adams over there. I mean, I worked together at the council and I just want to point out that he bought the hat for this guy and it's on the shape of a yurt on the top, which is a perfect facsimile, is that the word?
Just near enough.
Right, now tonight we're going to have three candidates and I'm going to think about some questions on the way through. Because I was going to think about it on the bus on the way.
But you were running late.
No, no, people keep running late. So anyway, we've got Fiona next to me. Now Fiona and I sit on a Pacific People's Trust or whatever it's turned its name recently. Fiona cheers and has done some terrific work together. We've got Nathaniel alongside her. And I had a phone call from a friend of mine who lives in Nathaniel's ward. Tonight, that was the phone call on the bus, to say how impressed he was with these young people waving signs in the freezing cold. And that, I think he's got his vote. And Simon, welcome from, is it still called the Papanoi Ward?
Mm-hmm.
It is. So we've got Papanoi. What's your one call? So these things will change after I... So...
The world moves on without you Gary.
Well, I know. I just miss, keep missing the bus. Anyway, what I want to ask each of you, first of all, is to introduce yourself and say why you should go to local city council. And then I'll ask you some questions.
Who's that? It's him.
No, I've got it here, we're all sharing. I know, I know you were kind to share. So, you want to start, Fee?
Yeah.
Right.
Kia ora kua sa, tāranga lapa. My name is, well, my official cultural name is Waimonu Fiona Chapman. Got that title two years ago from Samor, but most people know me as Fiona. What was the question?
I forgot.
We're going to be terrible. But I guess why I would make a good councillor? 1983 was the last time there was Pacific representation on the board, so 1983. And so... The Westerfield. And so I feel like I represent community. Hey! I represent community, but I also represent diverse voices around the council table. So that was a huge part of the reason why I wanted to run the council this year.
The way the question is often framed when door knocking is I say, "Hi Nathaniel, I'm running for council in the area of business. Why would you ever want to do that?" And I usually, I do say, because I really, really, a lot of different things about politics, how it works, how local politics work, I really, really enjoy. Quite enjoy door knocking, getting this sort of big view, this cross section of all the different people that live in an area. My work experience last few years has been with the Living Wage Movement, doing community organising. And the two parts of that I found really fascinating, one was, yeah, this, what's going on in the community? What are people's aspirations, what are their goals, how can they work together? And then the other part of it that I think of as being the sort of, the scheming side of things is, you know, the council table and how do you actually get policies across the line? And that sort of side of things I also find really fascinating. As far as my personal drive of what I would want to do on council, the biggest issue for me would probably have to be housing. Really, just really feeling that as a city we have an opportunity to build a city that is really special, that really works really well for families, for everyone. And it's, we have a really good opportunity and we could, we could mess it up really badly. So I want to, I want to be a little part of making sure we don't mess it up.
So Tato, of course, Simon Britton, Takawarua. So standing for council and community board in Papanoi Ward as a People's Choice candidate. I can answer the question in two parts, why, why am I standing and why should people vote for me? People ask me both on the doors and on the phone calls. I'm standing for love is what I tell people, I love the community, I love our city. I'm really passionate about, you know, a positive future for our community. My name is Simon Britton. Yep, that's it, for Papanoi.
We know you.
Why should people vote for me? There's a few things I really care about. One of them is getting some of the, some of the discourse about council and some of the conversations even within a council, just kind of lifting our eyes a bit and thinking about the big issues. Because a lot of energy seems to be put into some of the, some of the little things. And, you know, there are, we don't want to get tripped up on every bump along the way. We want to be thinking about, yes, housing. For me, the future of how a council funds and finances its activities, probably something you think about Gary with your background. I have a different background, but, you know, what's on the horizon for council in terms of revenue, income, the rates pressures, rates caps, that's a, your relationship with central government, that's a big, big conversation. And that's the kind of conversation I want to see us having, far, far more than putting all the heat and light into, into the small things.
Thank you very much. Good, good answers everyone. So what particular special qualities do each of you, would each of you bring to the table? And what would you change at the table?
I thought I would have some time to think of an answer. You got me. Particular qualities, okay. So I think I suppose going back to the community organising experience, in terms of that process from starting, maybe, maybe talking, just as an example, you're talking about a small issue, because there are a huge amount of small issues we've got to deal with. As council, it's a big part of what people expect of us. That methodical approach of starting and spending a lot of time in that, in that kind of deep listening phase of talking to people, trying to understand all the different perspectives on an issue, like, you know, it could be a speed bump or a local park. It's a really, really clear result. I think what we often see a lot of on council is people who think their job is just to get in the media and rail against something and get a lot of, get a lot of headlines, get a lot of attention that way. And that's really not what I want to be doing as a councillor, I want to be...
Long term, is to come back to that question, because again, on feedback through the election campaign, hearing from people who, you know, I was in a street that was being significantly impacted by construction and the project that was being built, there was a great round of engagement on. I remember because I was on the hearings panel for it. So there were submissions, there was a hearings panel, there was a recommendation to council, all the council consideration, the whole thing. I spoke to people on that street who, who said to me, "How was it decided that what decisions are made? And doing more to get more, more participation in that decision-making process."
Yeah. Community, but what I love about community, I guess what I bring to the table is actually authentic, really authentic relationships. And, you know, I've just seen Jane walk in, and Jane is actually somebody from my past. My previous role that I used to, I bring this lived experience that I keep referring to. But my role before I actually came into community was working in the microbiology lab at Southern Community Laboratories. And Jane's partner was, you know, you think of these people who were hugely influential in the way you pivot. You know, Jane and Ben were, you know, some of those people that really mentored me along the way. And I think about, you know, my life's journey, you know, Ben was very pivotal in saying, as my marriage broke up, he was influential in saying, "Well, actually, Bee, you need to come and work full-time." So I didn't go on the benefit and, and worked full-time. And I, and I was actually just talking to Beebe before we came here about I hate that label of single parenting. Because actually, I wasn't a single parent, I had my village. And so my village always helped me, I think of my parents, my friends, my siblings, they were always there to help lift. So I feel like I come with an authentic community uplifting, collecting of people and then just learning lots of things along the way. And even every space that I've moved into, so like, you know, I've been in community basketball now for over forty, forty-five years and...
You're not that old.
No, no, I'm not. But the club's been going for fifty-six years, so, you know, I've been involved in that committee for a long time. And then out of that, they were like, "Oh, Bee, you'd be fantastic on the CBA board." So then I get trusted into this, this position. So I'm learning lots of things on that board. And then, you know, my final term on the board, they go, "Oh, you'll make a fantastic chair." So then I'm going in the chair. So I feel like the universe has this way of opening up these doors for me. And then, and if I don't take those opportunities, then I'm, you know, I feel like I'm not serving the purpose that I'm meant to be here. You know, Gary alluded to before, me being on the chair.
Right now, I want you, each of you, to actually talk firstly about a decision that council made in the last term that you thought was really good, and a decision that the council made in the last term that you think was wrong and why. So would you, Simon?
That's a new one. So something that came up just at the weekend, I was talking to somebody and we had, we had quite different views on quite a few things. And he was kind of running through his checklist of the things that were important to happen. And one of them was, would you rejoin Local Government New Zealand? And my immediate answer is yes. I've been on the community board for two terms. My first term, I had no connection with, with Local Government New Zealand at all. Didn't, didn't really connect to me as a, as a first-term community board member. But in this most recent term, I put my hand up to take the role as the regional representative, representative on the community board's executive. And that, that brought me into contact with LGNZ as a, as a deputation on AID without, without changing the council's mind. A decision that I agree with, there are, there's a few. Thinking big picture, the decision in this year's annual plan process to establish, and I might struggle to come up with the words, apologies, if you're listening at home, maybe I'll put a comment up. But that doesn't detract from the value of it. It's a, it's a piece of funding that's been put into place now with a view to spending it in, I figure, sort of decadal zones. That's the kind of long-term thinking I like, and it's the kind of areas that we need to be turning our minds to increasingly.
Gosh, I don't even know where to start. I feel, I feel like there's still lots of learning for me in terms of, you know, all the, the council talk, but, you know, I guess it would be wrong of me not to talk about the sale of assets. You know, we don't want to sell assets as People's Choice representatives because I think we're here for the long-term, even though these decisions are made, we, we want long-term gain for, for our future generations, but not for a short-term gain. I think, I think people need to realise that that's the vision, that's what we stand for. And I feel like everything that we do should be for our future generations. The other thing I get a little bit lift about is when people catch on to buzzwords like community-led development stuff. And then I feel like, as, as a Pacific person, we've always done community-led development and movements have been shaped because that's stuff that we do intelligently, rather than people designing these frameworks and saying they're community-led, but you can only community-led them between nine and five. What has the council done well? Oh, ooh. I have to really think about that one. They used to have Gary Moore as the mayor. But that's probably going a wee way back. Let me have a look, we think about that, I might be able to...
Just to give you some numbers, Auckland Council, when Wayne Brown started as mayor, had nine billion dollars' worth of debt. They sold the airport for two billion and their debt's now eleven billion. So tell me what happened, the reason.
So one thing I agree with, one thing I disagree with council points. So I will start with the, the disagree is the vote against upzoning the Sydney, sort of between Moorhouse and Broome Street area. The number one issue that I hear out on the street in Sydney, in sort of like South Park Sydney, Waltham, Orpaua as well, and in Hillsborough, is concerns about the way the city's being built, concerns about doing a lot of intensive development in the suburbs when we still have a huge amount of empty space in the city. It's such an absurdly short-sighted decision. And there's a bit of a lot of fixation about the one vote, I think Celeste Donovan, about the conflict of interest, all this sort of stuff. Yeah, but then we've got to remember all the other councils that also voted against it, you know? I think, I think Celeste and Sains, but we still had, I think, seven city councils who voted against what I think is the only way that we can responsibly plan for growth in Christchurch. It wasn't a perfect proposal, but it's a start and we really need to make sure we don't sprawl for biodiversity. We need to make sure as much as possible, even in the suburbs, we're not concreting over grass space, we're not cutting down trees. We can do that, but we've got to make some bold decisions about the inner city and what we want it to look like. As far as the sins I do agree with, I think the, although I know some councils were unaware that they, that the vote was before them, was the Park Terrace cycleway issue. So I think that the, the, one of the biggest, I think, frustration, I was talking about like community engagement and your community's feeling that they have a voice. I think a lot of time what goes wrong with consultation is that the process sometimes feels so long and unwieldy and sort of sludgy, that people have no idea how their voice even impacted the process in the first place. I remember the first, I think, right when I was starting as an organiser, there was that, some kind of community meeting and the council was presenting the annual plan and it was, it was so bland and positive that it was really hard to, for anyone in the room to sort of provide an input. And I said, "What if you instead, what if you, what if you intentionally created the worst annual plan you could think of?" And then people would be really encouraged to get involved and give input and say what they want to do, you know? Like a nightmare, future Christchurch, that's our starting point for an annual plan. So on the cycle, on the Park Terrace cycleway, for the record, I think it's a good cycleway. But getting out there, just doing something, and then if people get really angry, if people don't like it, then we can have the conversation. We know what we're dealing with, it's there, we've done it for cheap compared to a lot of the other infrastructure in the city. I think that's the way we should be doing things. And then people get involved and they get excited and they think they're contentious and that's how it should be. It's much better than a bit of hopelessness, which you hear a lot of on the, on the doors around the city. Yeah.
I've thought of my thing that I've just... Yeah, sorry, the, the local alcohol plan.
Oh, yeah.
They've gone a real good year, I'll win for, for the council.
Just, just a little story about getting people involved. I had a council majority decided that they would keep the rates to the rate of inflation, which is going to, you know, the price of chutney, bread and milk has got nothing to do with what the council costs. So I asked the accountant at the council to give me a list of things that we'd have to cut as a result of this. And so he gave me a list and so I said, "Oh, that one and that one and that one." And one of them was surprising little libraries. We had thousands of missions just in little libraries. And so to punish the councils for being smart asses, I made the submissions on Saturdays and they'd come back. So there are ways to actually have quite a lot of fun if you want to. Right now, I'm going to ask each of you, what would you do in the red zone? Who wants to be first this time? Simon looks like he's got ideas on it. He had that dull look in his eye.
I'll, I'll, I'll do a short one. I, I think, yeah, for me, the, the opportunity there is to, to progress perhaps at a little bit more pace. I mean, probably, I'm not on the inside in terms of red zone, it's outside my community board area. We're, we're upstream from some of it, so we, we have some thoughts around waterways and so on. But, yeah, for me, I, you know, I love what I see that has happened, for example, the city to see pathway getting some more, facilitating some more sort of active, active transport through that area. I, I was out for a run along that last night. And so, yeah, I love to see things that are involving people starting to happen there. Still, you know, it seems to be growing a lot of grass, when a lot more exciting things could happen across large parts of it. And I'm sure we can, sure we can do better than that. For me, it's an opportunity to, I guess it's the, the park along the River to complement Hevee Park is, is something that I'm sure has been talked about along the way somewhere.
I'll add to my question then, what structure would you put in place to make a difference? So something happens. Because we're all frustrated.
Yes.
There is a structure, can I say, there is a structure in place and it is not met. I heard that today.
Thank you, thank you to that person in the crowd. Can you repeat your mic, Benny? Yeah, yeah, so we, yeah, we've established a, a government structure, right, for, for decision-making on the red zone. Doesn't seem to be progressing with pace. I hesitate to criticise it when I don't, I mean, I'm not on the inside of what's happening there. But, you know, it's going to be there for a long time, yes, but it's been fifteen years already, right? So, so maybe it is about time we, we put our foot on the gas a wee bit.
I'll just say quickly, I've been very focused on just my Hainoa ward area. And if I'm elected, I'm going to have to do a huge amount of homework on some issues in other parts of the city. Nothing for me on that currently.
Well, a lot of the red zone is in my ward. And so I'd love to see more active family space and stuff in there, cycleways that link up, basketball courts along the sideways, you know, my waka club that I'm in, we, we paddle on the otakaro. So, you know, some of that's resources injected into that area so more people can start using it as a, just a, a real connector. Like there's, there's opportunities there to, you know, bring the community together in that red zone. So, yeah, I think utilising and upgrading that space, then like what Simon alluded to, the start of it is already looking really good, so more of that.
Right. Fee, an awful lot of Pacific Islanders lost their homes in the red zone. And how do we embrace the people who have lost their Te Rangawaia, their home? How do we embrace that as a council? How would you, how would you address that question?
Yeah. How would I just, I'd love to try and save the world. I'm not sure, but obviously it'd be...
Just tomorrow.
Yeah. Let's include everyone in the conversation. Yeah, bring them, not, well, the council staff, they've employed one Pacific Island person who's covering, oh, I can't even remember what the, the population is, but it's up there in the hundred thousands of Pacific Islanders in here. But one person to get the message across to everyone. So, you know, traditionally it's always been, let's go to the churches and talk. But, you know, the next generations coming through are not always going to church. So we need to find creative ways of engaging with Pacific community to get the word or get their, what, you know, their feedback. Yeah. What about your Pacific community?
Um, I mean, again, I'm very...
That's you Fiona.
Yeah, yeah, everywhere I grew up in the city is over on the south. Like I've, I've, I've got a lot of learning to do about the red zone in, in that whole area. Can't really, can't really offer more at the moment, I'm afraid, yeah.
Just a couple of other quick things. One is, you know, considering that the homes that were lost and the, you know, the process, you know, by, by which people lost their, lost their homes, not just the natural disaster, but the, you know, the, the lack of power, I guess, afterwards. You know, the decision was not in people's hands, whether they would stay there or not, by, by and large. So certainly, I'm not a fan, you know, there's the odd suggestion of, oh, you know, we've got new technologies now and maybe we can put housing back on some of that land. Not a fan of that idea at all, both, I guess, sort of ethically, or maybe just ethically. That doesn't sit well. Tell you something I love in our central city, I did a walking tour a couple of years ago, picking up some of the cultural narrative that's been woven into the rebuild. And, you know, in so many places where you walk around the central city now, some of it's obvious, some of it, if you know where to look, you can, you can pick up particularly some of the Naitari story. And I think there's something in that we could take to the red zone with whatever comes next. How do we incorporate just those, whether it's through design features or artwork or information panels or what is it? So that, you know, in that future, we don't forget the story of those who came before and we can honour that as well.
Yep.
Well, I'm going to do some more about the red zone because would you or would you not think that, with the world facing global war and the need to have managed retreat, could we not use the red zone as an opportunity to have an experiment?
What can you elaborate on that?
Well, I'm...
That's the area we have to retreat from Gary.
Yeah, but, but can something happen in that area before, like for instance, houses?
Homeless, homeless.
No, I'm not putting the homeless there, just creating this area. So, so you can keep your opinion to yourself. Well, this is where I spend hours writing things and she'll, I send them to her to put on the Tuesday Club notes and they appear without mine.
Edited.
Edited and she didn't think I'm going to put that crap, are you sorry? Yeah, right.
It was the case of before the earthquake on the, on the other side of town.
I will say, on the, the sort of red zone in the future, that sort of thing. In twenty, you know, in say twenty-one hundred, where we could be a city of a million people in Christchurch, we're going to be probably very grateful that we didn't build houses on that, that corridor through there, through the red zone. I lived in Berlin for a few years over there, there was a Tammerhoffa Feld, which was in, it was an airport for a long time. It was where the, the airdrops, airdrops supplies in when, when West Berlin was being blockaded by the Soviets. And the hotel, the hotel, the airport was disestablished, but they just didn't do anything with the land. They left it, it's just a huge flat expense. And they said, "Look, if we need housing in the future, we can do, we can do that. But for now, let's just leave it." Now, it's this amazing park, it's sort of very oddly flat and barren, but it's great for people racing on, you know, like roller skates, all sorts, or, you know, all sorts of things that you wouldn't have thought about so much back when that first occurred. So I think, I, I don't know, I think that as a city we have a huge amount of pressing issues for, for dealing with the future. I wonder if the red zone is not necessarily one of those. But that could just be due to my ignorance, being a complete Southside Hethcote Ward person. Other, other thoughts?
I can lie to prove Southside. I, I now want to address the issue that, you to address the issue. At the moment, we've got Waimea Kiri, Selwyn, Christchurch and Eke. And Selwyn and Waimea Kiri have collected the development contribution that is, and we supply their rating network. What do you think about creating a new authority as they have in all? We'll do that first.
Well, I'm going to be quick, because I feel like that that actually needs more discussion with the, the group that it entails or involves.
There's a, I'm probably going to butcher this, but there's a quote from an urban planner, Jane Jacobs, that is, "Centralisation or agglomeration of authorities is when you create a new entity safely larger than the previous entity that was unable to solve the problems that you're facing, in the hope that for some reason this will help."
Yeah.
And we, in Christchurch City ourselves, as a city authority, we're already doing a really bad job of urban planning, of zoning. of um planning, of zoning. Yes, we will need, like as a region, as a category, we will need to work together to deal with some of the zoning issues and, you know, how we want Rollaston expanding and, you know, how we want people who are working in Christchurch but living in Selwyn paying for the roads that they're using. I'm a bit afraid of just going straight into a unitary authority before we have a bit more consensus about what we want this city to look like, you know? But congestion charging, all for it. Let's charge the Rollaston people for using our roads, definitely.
You're assuming, you're thinking in a three year cycle. It might take us ten years to get to that point. So this is what I encourage candidates and councillors to think about, long term, not three years. So you've just given me a three year answer.
No, 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 no.
I didn't hear that.
No, what I'm saying is that that conversation is the same as the conversation about what we want this whole area to look like. And we can't be talking, we shouldn't just be talking about a unitary authority in terms of them paying for the infrastructure that they're using. We have to be doing it in terms of what, what are we, you know, how are we putting, you know, nitrate into the river? How are we putting cars on the road, all that sort of stuff, you know? So.
It's a bigger discussion, isn't it? You know, because there's things, other things to consider like transport. What are we going to see long term transport wise? What are we going to, you know, you alluded to the water and that kind of stuff. So I feel like we can't give an answer now because you need to weigh up the whole picture.
So what elements would you put in place to conduct that exercise?
I guess it would be the discussion with the people in the, sitting in those areas.
I think I have a clear vision, at least on a council level, to starting with what we want the city to look like, that we can bring to those other regions and go from there.
My general orientation is towards localism rather than centralisation. I've been to council twice this term to have a grizzle about decisions being made at the council table that either impact or should be made at a community board level. With a successful outcome both times, with those ones. Council apologised to my community board for accidentally making a decision that was delegated to us to make. So that's, I guess that's my starting point on that one is, yeah, my general bias is I want to see our decisions being made as close to the communities that impact them as possible. I see a move towards a unitary authority potentially having higher impact on our, adjacent districts, our neighbouring districts than on Christchurch City. Potentially, maybe in all ways, except, I don't know, somewhere in the accounts. Which is a not inconceivable part of the equation. But I see more of the impact being on communities in Selwyn district, Waimea Kiri district. What would their representation look like if they were rolling into Christchurch? So for me, I would kind of defer that question in the first instance to those communities. And I guess I would, I would wonder, is there anything that's not operating well at the moment in the greater Christchurch partnership? Can we change something in the relationships without changing the structure?
Go on.
Well, why I raise that question is that if you don't get your head around it, central government's going to impose it. And say you have to actually have your mind in place.
We need a voice as a council, so I'd push that.
Yep. Now, I've been involved with this small group and we're talking about rediscovering the commons. And a lot of what the council does, the council was the trustee of the commons. What would you see as important commonly owned assets that we should protect at any cost?
The quality of our waterways, I'd say. I was at a, ages ago, I was at a talk about the commons and Tomatau spoke and he talked about going mudding. And he was talking specifically about how they have boats that go out there and they all just, they would just straight up refuse to let people use the boats that aren't part of their community and aren't contributing. Very unapologetic about that, basically saying the commons is just about everyone using. It's also about everyone taking responsibility. At the moment, our, you know, even here in the city, the Orpawa or the Otakaro, we're seeing rising nitrate levels. There are a lot of people out around Canterbury who are not contributing and who are taken. And that's the lot of change.
Yeah, just building off that, I'm old enough to remember swimming at coast forward. I don't think people do that anymore. So, yeah, we've lost our way a wee bit there. Another piece of the commons that I'll come to, to assets, council, you know, council controlled organisations and that too. But another, another part of this is our public spaces. And it's something we're poorly served with up in Papanui. There's, if you're familiar with the area, if you think of the area around Northern Shopping Centre, there's a council library, up Landings Road, there's a large and growing high school across the road from that. And then down the road, where there used to be a bit of an industrial area, there's now an incredibly dense retail zone. It's a massive public transport hub. It's a large intersection for people travelling by car. And on and on through. Really important to me, really important to people's choice that we're bringing into this election is the importance of retaining ownership and control of strategic assets. Our port, our airport, our data port, as you like to say, very unable. Our lines company, City Care, our natural monopolies. The things you can only sell once and once they're gone, they're gone. As a port from the airport, you know, you get the money in the bank. But then what? You know, the old day will come when the money's gone. And then what have you got?
Now, does anyone have any questions of the candidates?
I just think the one comment I'd like to make, coming back to the unitary authority. Before we go ahead with Christchurch, Waimea Kiri, Selwyn and Papanui, I'd like to go and talk to the people of Auckland. Did it work for them in Greater Auckland? Because my gut feeling is they'd say, no, it didn't work. I might be wrong there, but that's my gut feeling. Personally, I think we should be doing authority, but is it going to work?
And I think the things that, like these guys with their community boards, I think the community board has to have a way, way, way more delegated authority. That would make it work.
When you say delegated authority, can you expand on that?
Money.
Resourcing to accomplish or resourcing for guidance?
Both.
Get you done, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, look, for a community board to have to go cap and hand to the council for money to do a project that the local community need, it's just crazy. And that's duplicating, that's duplicating, it's double handed here. So, yeah, right, now, baby, the jury.
Yes, I have a question. The idea of divesting some of our assets has got, is part of this campaign and it's got some legs, a lot of people are talking about this. And I think it's because people are feeling the pinch. Everything costs more, including our rates. But also people don't want to see low levels of service. So as councillors, how do you, how would you balance the, the concerns about rising costs of rates, but also keeping up our levels of service? What other options do we have on the table to push and pull those levers?
I think one of the things that's been highlighted since we were talking is that huge disconnect between the council and the general public. And so I think the communication between council and the general public needs to be worked at better because no one wants to lose their services and no one wants to pay higher rates. So I think there was a really cool, I can't even remember what article it was, but it was just saying that the rates that we're paying now is really low compared to the services that we're receiving. So we can't, you know, people who are promoting rate caps, I don't know what they're thinking is going to be lost. Because to keep that community connection, we need those services. We need our libraries, we need our parks and toilet service, we need, you know, this, all of that. So, yeah, the communication and where the expenditure is going needs to be a wee bit more transparent.
So the question, how, if not by selling assets, how can we lower rates and not reduce services? Selling rates will not lower rates and it will reduce services. So if we, the airport is an easier example than the port at the moment because we've seen it's highlighted, it's doing very well financially. The assets that we own both directly give us money, like just dollars, you know, in the bank. And they also keep costs low in various ways. The port, for example, is able to invest in things that are going to be really good for Christchurch. It's going to be services for Christchurch. Currently, they're looking into a business case for a ferry from Wellington to Christchurch. That's going to be a service, you know, one day. Hopefully, that's going to be a service for the people of Christchurch and maybe it'll also provide some revenue. People, if we start some of these assets, maybe in the next year or two, we can have low rates and then things are going to skyrocket up. Well, if we want to be doing short term thinking like that, we could just, we could just raise more debt instead and just be honest with the rate payers about it. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the question for anyone who is a proponent of a rate gap is, what are you going to cut or, and or, what are you going to sell? I'd say this system's broken, but I don't think it is. I think, you know, it's that sign, you know, the system's, they no longer had money.
The reason why I think that's important is this, that as an actor and facilitator of the substantial change in Canada around recreational use of cannabis has produced a revenue stream that I lied about in my merril statement. And anybody who can read that.